Top left, right?
Camera's not on in the meeting room.
Does that work? I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Muckler.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manny. Hammond. Packard.
Here.
Conflict of interest declarations. Hearing none. Approve agenda. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Muckler.
Here. Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Motion, motion approved. Approve minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Muckler.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? That aren't on the agenda? Okay. Greg Peters. Is he not here again? Well, we can come back to him.
Yeah.
Ina, are you ready?
Yes.
We'll start with your budget.
Um, I don't think there was very many changes. The only, salary and wages, I'm upping both Linnea and Kyle to the, to be a GIS tech. We just need two people to do it because we're, there's more and more all the time. And they are coming, we're doing an in-house training on, August 23rd and 24th, which is something that we pay for with our Snyder support. And I don't, I think the only other thing I maybe increased, other than the normal stuff was the phone system and our books. Because it seems like every year I'm having to train somebody else, so we have to get the books for their certification. So, I think it was an eight percent overall increase from what I'm showing from last year. And I did do the 12.6% increase in salaries. So, any questions?
Can I, I've got a question. Repairs and maintenance, are those for non-facilities related? Repairs and maintenance or, you know, I think what we've been trying to do is to put repairs and maintenance in facilities.
Yeah, that's, that's like stuff in our office. It's like, our copier contract and if anything's not covered with Ericsson's, we have never had anything that would be considered courthouse in our repair and maintenance. I didn't realize that until you were, that we had that in our, should have had that in ours.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. The only other question was utilities increase.
And, and I think those are, is that the new phone?
I'm not sure.
Phone service.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. Those were my only questions. Looks good.
Any other questions for Ina? Thanks, Ina.
All right.
We're gonna jump down to the bottom. Vouchers. Did everybody get to see those?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Muckler.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Um, Hammond.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Motion passes. Parcel number 15090-00100-020-01. Set surplus sale. We'll need a motion to set the, the date. We need to figure out how long it takes to publish. Do you know that, Nicole? We should be able to, well, you can call Carrie, right? We should be able to get that thing published and set for the, the last meeting of the month.
Yeah.
That's three weeks. We should be able to set it for August. What is the last Tuesday? The 30th? Yeah. Yeah, if you wanna, let's be, just be safe. Let's set it for the 6th of September.
Okay.
That way Carrie can help you get that figured out, get it in as quick as we can. So if we just set September 6th at, 10:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
Lexi, is that COVID leave personnel policy discussion? Is that?
Do we need to actually pass the valuation? As a motion?
Oh, yes, sorry. Hold on to that thought. So we'll, yes. We'll need to set, we'll need to do that valuation.
It was determined last meeting that three commissioners would, if an agreement would be set the valuation along with the Department of Equalization. So I'm making a motion by the board of three council commissioners that the valuation is set at $1,657.70.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Muckler.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. So now back to the, the COVID leave personnel. Is that an executive or do you want to do that now?
I think you're fine having basic discussion about policy in an open meeting. If we get to a point where any one of you guys has specific concerns about, you know, something you're gonna bring up that you believe would have legal implications, or certainly if we're gonna use, let's say, a specific employee situation as an example, we don't want to do that in an open meeting. That would fall under then qualifications, county fitness and, and specific employee personnel related things. So, I'll just leave that up to you guys, but I think the general discussion would occur in an open meeting, just if you think you're gonna tread into something that would be employee specific or concern liability, then we would want to go into executive for that.
Okay. Are you ready to, you ready to talk about that? Because we're, we're way ahead, so.
So you just want me to introduce it?
Well, so I missed the department head meeting that day and I know
Okay.
you guys had discussed and with Karen.
Yeah, so, um, just as a means of things, we had talked about what we as department heads were supposed to be approving when it comes to time off and leave for employees who get COVID or are exposed to COVID in some capacity. There has been so much change over the course of time, certainly as we've known more, CDC guidelines, those types of things. I think there's some discussion, there was discussion in our department head meeting as what is deemed fully vaccinated, because of course then that impacts how you respond if there's been an exposure, those types of things. And, you know, one of the things that we certainly all were in agreement of and after discussing with Karen is, it doesn't appear as though any counties are and have for quite some time been doing what is still probably technically on the books for our policy. So, well, we understand the policy to be at this point in time, what Carrie certainly had advised, some of us who've had employees with COVID, is going back through the minutes, the way it was left, I think there was some discussion about possibly changing, but the way it was left is all the way back to the original, you know, when COVID was hitting, that there was going to be this policy of, we're not requiring employees to take sick leave when they have COVID. This is a separate leave, paid leave that employees are provided. And as time has unfolded in the last couple of years, you know, and employees get, can get COVID on more than one occasion, is that something we want to continue to do? It's our understanding after talking to HR, Karen has applied, she did kind of a survey of local counties, that's not what anyone is still doing. Once, once the federal government did away with the COVID relief mandates, a number of places changed their policies and I just wanted to bring up what she had left us with. Because I don't think you guys were in on that. So it's, it's just kind of a question of what do we want to do from here? What do we want to change? But kind of an unlimited COVID relief for employees on top of sick leave? And then what level of proof, you know, that was also brought up of, do you, it's just an interesting conundrum because with COVID, you know, if we go, if we revert back to regular sick leave, which is bring a doctor's note in, if you're gonna be on more than three days, can we compel people to stay at home if they shouldn't be in the office? I think, I know, I think most places are using some form of sick leave and then allowing, one of, one of the examples they gave was, well, if you don't have any sick leave for your employee, let's say it's a new employee who hasn't built up a bank of sick leave, what do you do? And some places were allowing employees to go into the negative on, on sick leave hours. I think there was one county that seemed excessive. I mean, like 80 hour for the sick leave, I think that's a liability for us, and I know that that was not favored by other departments. You know, what is reasonable? And just looking for direction from you guys as far as where do we want to go with this and how do we want to update the policy on that?
I know other businesses in town are, I mean, you're using your sick time or you go unpaid.
And that was discussed as well.
Or, and or vacation, whatever you, whatever you have. And I think it's, what, five days, I think is the new, is the guideline? After, after test, right?
Yeah, it's less than that now, isn't it?
I think it was after displaying symptoms. So that's been, you know, I, I know that was something that we worked through in our offices. By the time you test positive, if you count back to when you first started displaying symptoms, you might not actually have to be home from work for, and especially if you got a weekend thrown in there and, and those types of things. And then, you know.
Right. Yeah, I think that's right. And the symptoms, symptoms, you can come back. Something like three days or something like that, isn't it?
So, sick leave, so just like our basic sick leave policy, just as a means of things, is that sick leave is earned by non-exempt full-time and deputy state's attorney employees as follows, halftime, four hours per month, full-time employees exempt, eight hours per month. And then some of the questions Karen posed were, you know, could you allow people to go into negative in their sick bank that would require more tracking for the auditor's office? Can they go negative for non-COVID related illness? So what if they use the sick bank for allergies and headaches and then they get COVID? Can they go negative then? When will you, will you end that policy later? What will you do with the group that's already negative? What if they have a negative sick leave balance, then find a different job? Do you collect the balance?
So we're not in that situation right now.
Correct.
So that's, that one's simple enough for us to fix.
Yeah.
But I think we better treat, I personally think we should treat it as a regular sick time.
Yeah.
Now, whether you wanna, when they come back after that three or five days, what I, whatever it is, do they need to wear a mask for five days? I know there's businesses in town that require that.
And I don't know, I mean, that, that would be CDC, maybe you wanna, you know, pursuant to CDC guidelines in case those change, maybe you want the policy to reflect response pursuant to CDC guidelines. So you don't have to go in and update the policy every time something like that changes.
No, but my God, that's a moving target weekly. Who's gonna keep track of?
I don't know that we would need to do that, probably. No, it could be that I'm kind of worst case, you know, I've had dang stuff twice, once right after surgery, and so the second times wouldn't have been, I tested negative pretty much right away, but boy, I was really sick for two weeks. And you can burn through a year plus of, of sick time in a hurry if, if I had been an employee under the, under this health plan. So.
There is FMLA for any type of sickness, and we talked about that too, is how do you protect the employees? How do you protect the employer?
Correct.
And so, for any type of sickness and how do we make COVID, you know, think of it in terms of regular sick time too.
That's one of the risks you have, if you have too tight of a, a sick time policy is that folks may come back to work sooner than they should, because they're the ones that are evaluating whether they have symptoms or not. Isn't, is if we were sending them to, to a doctor to evaluate them before they can come back. So I worry a little bit about us as the employer adding risk to our, us and our other employees by being too tight, but.
Dick, you're a long way away from your mic. Real hard to hear.
Sorry about that, Andy. I was a long way away from my mic. I was back in thinking. So, maybe allowing to go into rears like three or five days or something like that could help with that sort of a thing. We wouldn't be allowing anyone to get too far out of whack as far as, is in a rears too far, get sick and then come back one day and then quit, or something like that, but I, I don't see, it could be that something like that is kind of a middle of the road that would not end up costing us anything other than, well, wouldn't it would, there'd be really no net loss to the county unless someone left in the interim before they could reaccumulate that in five days. We wouldn't be out much.
The one problem with that was also recording of it and trying to keep track of the negative, wasn't that?
Yeah, yeah, there's, if someone were in, you know, it's likely not very many place would end up in the negative. How do you track those now?
Just because Jess does that, but I'm guessing she just goes off the payroll form that like people turn in.
Right.
But after that, I have no idea. That'd be a Jess or Carrie question.
Lexi, is that something the department heads track when they turn in their pay?
I mean, we turn in every month, employees fill out their hours and there's, there's, if they were gone for half a day for sick and had three days of vacation or something, there's individual forms, we turn in with a, with a sheet that tracks the individual hours for each employee. We, you know, I initial next to each one of them and sign off on the leave forms. So those get turned in monthly and then that comes off, I don't know if it's monthly or if it's every few months or something. We'll get a, a printout from Jess about where employees are at with their sick indication.
And then Dick, is it just gonna be only for COVID they can go in negative? Because that's gonna get a slippery slope if we're gonna allow it for everything.
But that's the thing is I'd want to make sure that then there's a system mechanism that can do negative, because of course we don't see, we haven't seen a negative printout today, because we don't, we don't have that.
We don't have that option available right now. I.
So there, I know in the, in the city, we used to have where if people went into the negative, whether it was for cancer or something, you know, that there was a pool of that other employees could chip into that pool. I'm feeling that's a much more valid than trying to play with the negative on one disease when there are other diseases that I think are extremely valid.
And that is definitely direction two from HR that would, that would concur, fill us with the the philosophy of if you, if you're gonna allow a negative sick leave balance, they would encourage negative for everything, not just COVID.
Yeah.
Not to isolate that out.
Most of the time it would be somebody that's undergoing long-term cancer care or something like that. That comes up pretty often in that kind of a setting. And at the state too, I, we had a sick leave pool at some point halfway through the time that I worked there, sometime in the early 90s. We had a, a couple of cancer patients that were in another department and that's why we instituted the pool system there and I had thousands of hours of sick leave anyway, so I donated to that pool.
The other is accidents.
Yes, correct.
Is what?
Is accidents.
But, but then FMLA will kick in there. I think it's, it's not so much that they're missing the time and, you know, back to your point of their, their self-diagnosing when they can come back to work.
Right.
It's never a health issue, it's a financial issue.
Yes.
Can I afford to be gone?
Yes.
So on like cancer accidents where FMLA kicks in, I don't, will FMLA kick in if you're gone for a week with COVID? I mean, it's, it's too quick of a turnaround.
Yeah, I think the obligation is on us as an, as an employer supervisor to make Carrie aware, hey, we have something that may be FMLA eligible, we send notice to the employee and then they, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's easy, but it's easier when we have something like, we know somebody's gonna go on maternity or paternity leave.
Right.
Get in front of that, notify them what their options are, because then they can take it spaced out over time too. And that would be the thought is.
But I mean, you're, you're back to work before the FMLA paperwork ever gets final.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I am, you know, I am a bit concerned about other employees and, you know, if somebody has a real financial hardship and decides to come back before maybe they've had a negative test. And I do like the idea of using the CDC guidelines to determine when employees can return to work. Either, either that or, you know, we set a policy and it could be, you know, have a negative COVID test or so many days since the first positive COVID test, but I, I, I do think just to protect every employee, we need to have some back-to-work criteria for post-COVID.
What's our policy on carrying sick leave over?
So that we can carry over. I, I think vacation has a cap. I don't know that sick leave does. Just one second.
Sick leave has no cap.
There you go. And then we pay out one quarter of sick leave unused for somebody who gives two weeks' notice up to a maximum of 480 hours. Um, so there was some language that was suggested, and I don't know that this was necessarily to be included in the employee handbook, but certainly to put, so, so once we're discontinuing this policy, we need to put employees on notice about that. So there was some language suggested by Karen reminding people of what their sick leave benefits are. And then providing some additional, so Quay County provided additional paid off, paid time off in some circumstances as a result of COVID pandemic. Effective X date, the additional paid time off for COVID-related illness will no longer be provided if an employee contracts COVID or any other illness, they should use their time off from their sick leave bank. To protect employees from the spread of COVID, Quay County will follow CDC guidelines for isolation and quarantine in situations where employees have been exposed or tested positive for COVID. As a reference, here's the current link to CDC guidelines. As a reminder, our sick leave policy states that you may be required to provide documentation from your physician to score an injury or illness-related absence and to ensure that you may return safely to work. If you have tested positive or been exposed to COVID, discuss a return to work date and appropriate masking protocol with your supervisor. And I think that gets to there. I just don't know if this is putting everyone on notice or if we need to make, I mean, probably you guys need to adopt something at some point in time that we are discontinuing that policy effective this date. I think we could implement these things because that really does allow flexibility as policy and CDC guidelines change, puts everybody on notice, take a look at your, our sick leave policy, and then the only other thing I think for you guys to discuss, and I don't know that these need to be simultaneous, is do you want to allow negative sick leave back?
Would it be easier to give everybody an extra week of sick leave? But for the, for every year, it can be carried over and it can't be paid out. If, if you were to quit or retire and you've got 80 hours of sick leave, we take 40 off. Then you'd only get paid for the 40 you have remaining, and that's only 25% of that, correct? Instead of.
Well, right now it is, it's 25% up to 480 hours.
Right. But I mean, if we're gonna give them an extra 40 hours a week or year in sick leave and only can be used for COVID.
How do you approve it?
Well, they have to have a doctor. I mean, if you're gonna say I've got it, you have to get a test.
Yeah.
So that, that, there's gonna be proof there. There, that doesn't be an extra five days a year that you can use for COVID. But we don't pay. If they were to quit or leave, that's not sick leave that gets paid out. That's just, it's gone, that 40. I, I hate the negative part. I hate going in the hole.
Travis, that's basically where we are right now, where everybody gets an extra week of COVID leave.
Well, right now you could get COVID two, three times a year and take a week off and, and get paid for it.
So you're saying they can get COVID once a year and not have it come out of their sick leave bank?
Correct.
Or a family member. I mean, I think that that's one, there's family sick time too, and I think that that's some part of the.
Then that's gotta come out of regular sick time.
Okay.
Because what we're really trying to do is protect the rest of the employees too. And not create a financial hardship for the person who can't be at work. It's never gonna be perfect. There's gotta be a.
Well, do you guys wanna mold this over a table that, propose that to Karen and see what she, see if there's any downsides that we're missing?
Yeah, but she's always gonna throw a wrench in it. HR is never friendly.
I love having them, because then I'm not always the bad guy.
Yeah.
You can think that.
Well, we share that somewhat too.
Yeah.
So if, if we can just put that on the agenda for next week and then, or not next week, but next meeting, and then we can think of whatever.
Yeah, let's think, think it over.
If there's more other ideas.
Yeah. Yeah.
Personally strengthening the masking when you come back.
Cause right now, I don't think we have, we don't have anything correct currently, do we?
No, and that's been one of the things I was gonna say, is there's been a lot of leaving up to the department and department heads, because each department is very different when it comes to how many people are in the office, social distance. I mean, even within our office, different employees, if we're following CDC guidelines, are gonna be treated differently. And we've, we've discussed that. I mean, if you can go into your own office and be away that, you know, can take your mask off, but what do you do for the people who can't? And can we accommodate any? So I, I like the language of, um, I really like the language reminding everyone that in our sick leave policy, and oftentimes we think of this more as it pertains to injuries. But you may be required to provide documentation from your physician to support an injury or illness-related absence and to ensure that you may return to work safely. I mean, I think that allows some flexibility. Because I would tell you like right now, I would, as a department head, honor an at-home test for my people. You know, if I have somebody who's had it how many times and I start thinking like, oh, you know, we might get into it, but from a practice standpoint, you know, when I had it, called the doctor's office and they said, if you take an at-home test, that's good enough for us. Would they have probably given me a, a note or something if I said, well, I need this for work? Yes, but, um, but I think those are things where that allows some flexibility, but also allows for safety of if you as a department head want some type of documentation or proof that you're good to come back to work, that's okay too. Um, and then if you have tested positive or been exposed to COVID, discuss a return to work date and appropriate masking protocol with your supervisor. Cause that's gonna be, that's gonna be highly case sensitive depending on when they were symptomatic, what their, what their status is for, I mean, is it, I mean, all those types of things. So I think those couple of things really allow the flexibility that's needed dependent upon the individual and their circumstance and the rest of their colleagues. But.
But then there's always the, certain people who know they've got the symptoms. The doctor says you've got the symptoms and you're testing negative. Then what do you do? I think it's gotta be a judgment call.
Yeah.
It's not, this isn't gonna be perfect.
For the most part, it sounds like if, if you test positive, you're probably able to affect others. More, in most cases, if, if you don't test positive, even if you have some symptoms, you, you're not likely to be a spreader. I, I'm no doctor, but that's what, that's what I was told, you know, when I had my sentence for so long. So I stayed home anyway, but.
So we'll discuss it at the next meeting then, if we can come up with anything. And Greg, we're gonna quick do Ryan, get him out of here and then, so if you're ready, Ryan.
I'm pretty sure the biggest question is gonna be the equipment replacement fund. We are placing our Z-tron radio consoles this year and that's a rather expensive price.
Ryan, just, uh, your, your microphone's not on, so we're not hearing you.
But, how's that?
Yeah, good, okay.
So is this the fifty, oh, go ahead, Andy.
No, I'm just telling them that worked.
Okay, um, where it says the E nine-one-one fifty percent reimbursement to city, is that?
I don't believe that's exactly accurate. That's just on my Excel spreadsheet here, but I know that whatever is in that equipment replacement fund comes off the equipment replacement line first and then it gets split. Where my, I don't believe my spreadsheet did that.
Do you know exactly what it is that we?
Um, I did about three months ago. Um, there was some emails with Carrie and Katie going back and forth. It was just over forty-nine thousand dollars in that fund, probably in like May or April, May, something like that. So then it's probably gone up a little bit then, uh, by then, by now, but I'd say about fifty thousand would be a pretty close number.
Okay.
I don't know how fast it was up, I guess.
So, but then what's that equipment? What is that?
Uh, the Z-tron radio console, basically we have three councils in our comm center for three different dispatchers that can sit there. The Z-tron is what ties, so we have nine radios we're monitoring in there, um, tied to the councils. What the Z-tron does is brings all nine radios together to one place for a person to set. So people can talk on all nine radios at one seat on one apparatus instead of, you know, having nine radios lined up. It also does the paging for the fire for, um, Vermillion Animal Conda. It does EMS for, um, Vermillion Animal Conda. It activates the weather sirens, um, for Vermillion Animal Conda. Uh, our door, our jail door system is all runs through that. So that's a touchscreen, um, when the jailers are coming in or out of the jail. Um, we, we control the buttons to unlock the doors while they're manning out. Um, so that, that piece of equipment does multiple things. Its primary function is to run the radios and the paging for a dispatcher. And also our phone system also ties into it. So when we have our headsets on, our radios and our phone system are brought together into the. And then if you're on the phone or if you're on the radio, it mutes out the phone. So the person on the phone is like, can't hear exactly what you're saying and something like that. So it's a very important piece of equipment. Um, I believe I found the contract, it was before I was in there. I believe it was the contract to purchase what we currently have was two thousand and three. So it's very old. Um, it's, the reason I've held off for so long to replace it is I was waiting to see what was gonna happen with the new building. Well, the problem has become, I've had two vendors in and they basically say it's one of the only ones left that they know about. So there are no more parts for it. Any stuff that's been taken out of another comm center. And that was you, gonna be used as spare parts for other people. It's been used up or even discarded at this point because there just aren't any around anymore. Um, so it's, it just can't wait any longer because there just is, there would be no way to fix it if something were to go out on it. It does have three computers to it as well. We replace those, um, you know, every few years. But the main, the main system, just there's not, it's not available anymore, needs to be updated.
So our share of that equipment is four hundred and nineteen thousand, is that correct?
Um, of that equipment, this, that equipment you're talking about?
Well, you're the.
No, that equipment for the, it was two hundred and fifty-eight thousand was about the number I had. So then you would take the fifty thousand off of that that's already in the fund. And then the city and the county would split that, whatever that is left, two hundred and ten thousand dollars left.
I'm gonna just let him look at what I've got, just to make sure.
That would be probab, let's, this is the nine-one-one, that's pretty close to the full amount requested for everything. That's not the equipment. Yeah, so the equipment total is right now a, approximate number of two fifty-eight.
And then we take fifty thousand off of that and split it twice.
Split that between the city and the county. So I'd be splitting two-ten, correct?
So a hundred and five.
Hundred and five per, per government, right? But yeah, that four hundred thousand dollar number would be my whole budget for the personnel and everything else that goes with it.
Okay, I think she's got the numbers flopped.
Are there any state or federal grants to help with this?
Um, I guess not that I'm currently aware of. I could research that, but none that I currently know of. And other than, I mean, that, everything else in my budget is pretty standard from year to year, but that, uh, that's obviously the big one. That's, uh, you know, the most, now that the state, the state provides our nine-one-one equipment system. So now that they do that, this is definitely the most expensive piece, piece of equipment that I have.
So, does everybody have their budget in front of them? If you'll look on this where he's, where it says Clay Area Emergency Service Communication. He's got it all broke out for us. It's page forty-five, I think. So we've got in there for total capital expenditures, it's two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. But that's the cost of the whole thing.
Correct.
So, so that number's gonna change. We need to take fifty thousand off that, divide by two, that, the two fifty-eight should be a hundred and five thousand.
Correct, yeah. And that's per the user board agreement from the, like, two thousand and four, I think is when it was signed.
Okay. Anything else, Ryan, or?
I mean, that's the main thing. Everything, like, like I said, everything else is pretty standard. There was a little increase in the equipment and maintenance. That's our, our mapping. Um, that has gone up. You know, we switched, uh, the sheriff got a grant for, um, the new mapping and it goes in the vehicles as well as the dispatch mapping. And that cost has gone up and we kinda, all, all three agencies split that increase this year. Cause we didn't really remember it was gonna happen or expect it. Uh, but I increased that line, uh, just to cover more of the mapping software now going forward.
How quick will this equipment come in?
Uh, well, we'd have to put it out for a bid, obviously, cause of the cost. And then I, I don't know if there's any delays with it or not. I guess I haven't gotten that far. Yeah, I've just gotten calls from a couple of different vendors just to get a ballpark to how much it would cost and was a little bit of a shock when I got the number, but, um, it is, I, two different vendors almost gave me identical numbers, so that's what, what it is.
Same manufacturer between them then?
Yeah, uh, we currently have Z-tron, um, radio councils, yeah, and I would comfortable with them. They've been great. Like I said, these have lasted since two thousand and three. I imagine the new ones won't last as many years, cause that's kinda how things are now. But, um, this is definitely lasting a long time and we've got our money's worth out of it. I wish that we didn't have to replace it, cause it's been so reliable. But if something does go wrong without there being parts, it's, we can't, can't have it.
Any other questions for Ryan? Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys for taking time today. Uh, my name's Greg Peterson, I'm on the Vermillion Development Corporation. Been a citizen of Vermillion for twenty-eight years. Part of one thing that, uh, we've decided to do with the BCDC is we put a group together that is looking at Cherry Street. We've done all the nice things down on Main Street. In the twenty-eight years I've been here, I don't think we've spent as a city really a nickel on Cherry Street. I realize that's a state highway and so there's some different things that go along with that, but it's beyond time. Um, we identified some areas of need. I appreciate the city and the county going together and asking the state to repaint the, uh, beautiful orange bridge that we have on the, uh, east side of town. That has been on my list since we moved. The other thing is we got the, the signs put in a few years ago. I don't know if people have noticed, but, um, our sign is nice, you know, it's, it's definitely a start. Um, if you drive by it now, there's some weeds and things around it. It's difficult to maintain. So one of the things that we decided was that we wanted.
Microphone on? Is this my, is it?
Closer to it, okay.
It's gotta be.
It's off, no, it's great, yeah, okay.
One of the things that we decided was that we wanted to get that sign looking in a fashion and easily maintainable. Uh, went out, got a bid from Weller Brothers. I went to Greg Ware Excavation. They're donating all their equipment. Dave Hertz is donating the monster block that we're gonna be putting in. It's gonna be buried down to just a foot above grade. There'll be an edging line around the outside of that, so they can mow straight up to that edging line, so they won't have to bring out trimmers. The total cost of project is, uh, it's twenty thousand plus the Greg Ware and the Hertz donation. I got four local business people to donate a thousand dollars each. The city of Vermillion's donating four thousand. The university's donating four thousand. The, um, the BCDC through Vermillion now three is donating four thousand. And I would like the county to be partners and donate four thousand dollars towards the completion of this project. So that's what I'm here to do today, is to ask for one-fifth of the project and then that way it's a true community project. I didn't, I got Cherry Street businesses. I didn't get any on the east side. We foresee a need for something to be done in the boulevard, the grassy area that's between the sidewalk and the street. Um, I didn't hit up anybody on that side of town, because at some point we'd like to see something done, whether it's through some, there are some grants out there to, there's been different conversations, probably the best idea is to get some sort of dark gray pavement like we have downtown. It's impossible to maintain that, that grassy area. It might look good now, cause we've had some rain. But in general, it, 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 it's impossible to maintain with the salt and sand that comes off the streets during the winter time. We're trying to clean up that whole area. We've done some research on some abandoned signs and abandoned properties. We've looked into trying to get a couple of the abandoned gas stations, their canopies and tanks removed. And I think we're making progress on getting that done. We're just trying to clean up the whole Cherry Street, cause no matter how beautiful you make downtown, if you wanna see downtown, you've gotta go through Cherry Street to get it. And that's your first and last impression on our community. And we're just trying to, trying to do what we need to do to get that look in the way it needs to look.
Are you hoping to do that this year, this beautification?
So if you guys donate, don't donate four thousand, I'm gonna have to go back up to the business owners to get four more thousand. I think next week Greg Ware's gonna start.
Okay.
The digging, so it'll be done here imminently.
I was just trying to figure out, so we know which budget it's gonna come out of.
Yeah, yeah. So we're using existing sign. It, it looks like, are you setting that up on, uh, monster blocks?
No, if you look, the existing sign is sitting above grade, you know, and it kinda sits out of the ground. So basically, and, and it's in a low area, so we're putting the mods, we're trying to create some dimension to it. So there'll be some trees behind, some evergreens behind it. The city is going to water it this fall and again in the spring. But everything that's getting planted is a hardy plant that won't need. The key is no maintenance, right? We don't wanna have something that is going to look terrible. So these are all very minimum maintenance plant material that we're putting into this project. And then, again, making it ease of maintenance around it. So that way, I mean, if you go out there today, there's a bunch of weeds around the light posts and, and everything else. So we're just trying to clean it up.
And so the monster blocks are around the periphery there.
Yeah.
That's what those are.
The two columns, are those lights or?
Yeah, those are existing lights that are there, yeah. Um, so it lights it up at night.
And it's gonna be exactly where it is now.
Yeah, we're not, the sign won't get, get touched. It's just basically doing landscaping around it and creating some dimension to the, you know, to the, to the piece. It's, right now, if you drive by it, I think it's pretty easy to miss.
Yeah, visibility isn't that great, where that gives you. I was in another meeting about a year ago, uh, where each of the entities, uh, the university, city, and I was representing county, that meeting for Travis and, uh, yeah, I, you know, I've thought all along that, man, it's easy to miss that darn thing. And if, if it were moved ahead fifty feet, would make a big difference. Or if it were elevated, yeah, some, some more would make a big difference.
Yeah, and I think that that's, we're trying to create dimension with what, with what this is. And I think that we're going to be able to increase the visibility by doing this. We had a few different people. And this started, I-CAP group was, was looking at doing it and they, uh, had a really small plan. And they said, this is kinda step one and then I, I kinda got involved and just thought, there's no reason, you know, let's just get this thing done and, and, and have it the right way and not worry about it, you know, for another fifteen years hopefully.
Hopefully. But the sign was put there because the state kinda told us where it could, could go.
Yeah, and we had to get permits from the state in order to do this. And that's all been, that's all been done and approved. Yeah, so I guess that's my request is for four thousand dollars. We're, we're billing it all through the BCDC. So the donation would be, if you guys are willing, would be made to the BCDC and then they are going to, um, take care of the, the pain of the, uh, the final bill.
Any questions for Greg?
No, I think we'll have to kinda look through our.
Have to see where we're at.
Situation right now.
We are, at this point, only what said that we will look at those other projects that we are not required to find. This is though. This is though, but I think we have to take it very seriously into consideration with everyone else as to what we can, we are tight.
And if it's something that you guys are willing to commit to, I can speak for the VCDC and say if, if you're willing to do it in your next year's budget, that we would be very fine with that. We'd just appreciate any, because we understand how those things go. And uh, we can, we can cover it in the interim for a twenty twenty-three expense if that works better for the county.
Well, you just heard, you know, sometime-
I didn't wanna go after him. He's asking for a hundred and five.
I'm kind of glad that you walked in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Your timing was perfect.
If nobody has anything else for Greg?
No.
Thank you.
For your consideration. Thanks.
Drew, first reading of ordinance twenty twelve, twenty twenty-two dash twelve. An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero five ordinance creating licensing regulations for medical cannabis establishments.
Finally, our medical marijuana license has been updated. Say when we went over, I think in July, this is now the, the final license for that. We also have the application, have a draft of it. Andy already went over it. Might be a few little changes, but that's gonna be the, the application for it. So that'll work for everyone.
So I, I just had a couple of um, comments on page five, number six. I, I think you've got two words here, um, prove and confirm. When probably confirm is, is the correct, correct word. It's just it grammatically doesn't-
Yep, yep.
Looks like a typo. So I, I think if you cross out prove, that works. And then on page eight, um, number B seven, um, it's just a unfinished sentence fragment. And it looks like it, you know, it just maybe got left in there as a typo because there's another sentence that seems to contain that.
Just page eight.
Number seven.
Page eight, B.
Oh, yes. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. I, that just looks like it, you know, an editing, editing issue. And then I had, I had just one question. Um, it looks good. Um, so for people who uh, apply for licenses partway through the year, you know, for example, you apply for a license a month before uh, the end of the year. Is there, would the fee be prorated for a partial year? Or do you have to pay five thousand even if it's only for two months of operation?
It would be the two months. Yeah, as it's written right now.
Yeah, I guess my question is whether, whether we oughta, we oughta prorate that based on the percentage of the year that the business is, is in operation.
We don't do it with any other licenses. That's how we treat the alcohol license.
Okay.
I'm fine with either way, but if that's how we do the other licenses.
I think leave it, leave it consistent with other licensing was best for me.
So that number, that number seven where it says medical cannabis dispensaries may only sell, what should that finish be?
I believe.
That may be covered in, I think that's a, maybe covered in another another provision. See if I can find it.
That was, should have been crossed out. It should just be crossed out. That's what I had on earlier draft.
That's what it looks like to me.
That's that number seven where medical, medical cannabis dispensaries may only sell. That's the one you-
Yep.
Yep. Yeah. That should be crossed out.
Right.
Does that relates to number one where it was duplicated? Yeah. We combined something happened there. So it should just been pulled out.
And back further, uh, we still had that in three near the top. We still had that deal or the recent agreement within the sentence. Medical cannabis dispensary licenses, no more than one, then it prints three licenses. It should be three, four of those to correct. There, that's just a-
Yes.
An easy one to fix. One of substance. We have all these. I've got a paper copy in front of me. The one in section eight where it says no alcohol or cannabis uh, products may be consumed on the premises. Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm, it's in section eight. It's the, oh. Switch gears here makes it a little tougher for me. Anyway, it was prohibiting no alcohol or cannabis will be consumed on premises in the dispensary. It's in the dispensary rules.
Got a page.
And I was thinking, that's what I was trying to find here. And I've got this other way to do this.
On page eight, I think. Page eight, number eight.
Yeah. Yeah, I was wondering, uh, it, it's no alcohol or cannabis. That's leaving, that's leaving a little side door open. I was thinking about adding or other similar products.
Yeah, cause there's other-
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could, you could grab a mushroom and walk on in.
Controlled, controlled substances.
Or other controlled substances. Sure. Yeah. Yeah. That's the correct, that's the correct. Thank you. Yes.
For you all that have been looking at this, you guys have anything?
I've, I've got a couple.
Yeah.
Yeah, please. Make sure the button's up.
Am I good? Yeah. All right. My name's Ned Horsted. I'm here uh, helping out Doug and, and his team. Just a couple of things, a few of them are already noticed. The I'm scrolling through the ones that are already covered. Uh, and I apologize. I don't really know the difference between home rule and, you know, the different city types. I noticed that your background checks go beyond state law, which is just a violent felony. I don't think there's any issue with that, but that's a legal question, I guess. I need to look at the zoning ordinance because I see in point, what is it? B five, three. Obviously you gotta meet zoning, nothing. I'm half talking out loud. Let's jump to page six, I guess. License to remain active. You've got fourteen consecutive days or sixteen, or sixty cumulative days for all license types. I appreciate that. You know, I don't think anyone wants someone to buy a license and just, you know, sit on it and not do anything with it. However, I would recommend changing that, either striking or changing that sixty cumulative days. Reason for that is on the cultivation side, if you have someone that's doing a greenhouse cultivation, for example, like that's far more than sixty days, you know, there's no way to grow in a greenhouse really. So that's, that's one piece on the cultivation side. Also on the dispensary side of things, you know, if a dispensary decides that they want to be open four days a week, because that's the only thing that makes, you know, business sense to do, uh, rather than paying labor for, uh, you know, two or three days where they don't have any customers. If you're running four days a week, that's roughly a hundred and sixty days out of the year that you would not be in operation. So I just wanted to call that out.
But you would be in operation. This would be sixty cumulative days of we're closed, we're out of business.
Yeah, I'm just saying if the doors are closed, um, like if, if you're not open for sales in your dispensary, for example, um-
But if those are your days a week.
If those are your set hours though, it'd be fine. Okay.
Consecutive days closed.
Well, the sixty cumulative days. Well, it's fourteen consecutive. If, if you're closed, it's, you're out of business. You go on vacation for three weeks, that's not consecutively out of business.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know. I didn't know if cumulative would be viewed as, you know, sixty calendar days throughout the entire year where you're not open. I just wanted to call that out. One on the cultivation side for greenhouses, for example, but also on the dispensary side in case they're not open seven days a week.
You know, and it says a license is not being actively used. You know, you could end up with, uh, you could still be in active use and not have the door open if you're undergoing product change or uh, remodeling and changing the arrangement of the products and that sort of thing. Sure. So uh, I wouldn't at least consider that those times where you're uh, not technically open, but, but you are onsite, uh, running the business, doing, doing uh, activities normal for the business, uh, outside of business hours. I would, I would consider that still being actively.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Ultimately, maybe a, a legal question there. Cause I just think, you know, traditional farming, for example, certainly sixty days during the winter time. I mean, there's always stuff to do in the shop and everything else. But uh, you know, for a greenhouse cultivation or something, there's not gonna be a lot of activity when it's sub-zero attempts out there. So-
No, but you'll be, you'll still be doing business of procuring seed, fertilizer, chemical, whatever you-
Okay. All right.
Just like every other ag business. I mean, it's not, this is, we're out of business and we're just holding the license.
Yeah. Gotcha. Um, down to page eight. Looks like it's section nine subsection C point one. No cannabis cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities, or cannabis testing facilities may share any physical location with any other type of business or land use type. We went through this, uh, you know, I did a lot of work with the Department of Health as, uh, the executive director of the Cannabis Industry Association. We ran into the same deal where it's really difficult to word and get what you want out of that. I think it makes sense here. However, uh, you might wanna look at uh, ARSD forty-four ninety, oh four oh four. It's one rule that we actually asked to be reverted by the Legislative Rules Review Committee. It talks about separate ingress and egress. So, and this may not be super relevant. I don't, I haven't looked at your zoning. You know, how many strip malls you have, uh, in county jurisdiction, for example. But the idea there, uh, that they allowed at the state level is if you've got a testing lab or a dispensary or something in a strip mall, it's got separate ingress and egress, but it's a little fluffy language, I guess. To not, not have ingress, egress language otherwise, unless the intent here is to say, you know, anything under the same roof whatsoever cannot, you know, you can't have a, uh, you know, sewing store here and a, a testing lab over here or something like that.
I think also with like uh, strip malls or, or businesses like that. I don't know. I haven't seen Clay County, but I know Union and Lincoln, they make them plat off at those.
Each strip mall is subdivided as to business.
Yeah. And that person is legally signed to that essentially parcel inside.
Okay. So physical location uh, would be defined as each of those parcels. Okay. Got it.
What was that you quoted us?
Uh, it's forty-four ninety, oh four oh four. That deals with locations and, you know, separate ingress and egress. It's just, you know, if language suits you a little bit better there. Beyond that, I think you caught all of them. Seemed like there was one other. Oh, just a, a small typo issue. Um, page four. So what about in section five? B subsection two, B, missing an H for has been convicted of-
One more time where that's a-
Page four, B two, B.
Missing an H.
Yep. But yeah, other than that, I think my, my primary concern here was just, uh, you know, sixty cumulative days might be viewed by future um, government officials as you know, a dispensary that is out of order by having, choosing to have their business open four days a week or a cultivation facility that, uh, you know.
There's down during that. There's a sentence after that, active use sometimes include, maybe firm up that language.
Yeah, I think so. But no, other than that, it looks good and appreciate you guys doing this.
So is that gonna, on that part, is that gonna be a substantial change then?
I think we've got enough here where substantial change and renotice it.
Renotice the first reading again?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm uh, right about that same place. Bottom of five, three, and at the top of four, confirmation of completed current gap round check, we trust with number even of all, to our probably associated with respective medical cannabis dispensary or testing.
Can you guys-
It wouldn't apply to the other two types.
Uh, where are you at here?
It's on page, top, bottom of page three and top of page four. The main question is, is, is that we're asking for background checks on-
Dispensaries, but it should be-
These guys be dispensary and uh, testing facilities, do we-
It should be all, it should-
Shouldn't be a need one? Is there a need for one on, on growth facilities and those sorts of things?
It's my understanding.
Probably do. Yeah. Section eleven, all those that unauthorized, that's on page nine, on that unauthorized conduct relating to cannabis. This stuff, this stuff relates to you know, we're talking about smoking cannabis on any form of public transportation in any public place or any place that's open to the public for the property of any cannabis obstruction, uh, establishment. And most of that relates to the customers, not necessarily the license, doesn't it?
Uh, yeah, it'd be no person. I think that's the-
And I guess my question is, what's that got to do with the license?
Like I said, that's something brought over many haws. Um, I don't know if they kept that in there or not.
What do you think, Lexi? This is, uh, what we're doing is holding the dealer or the, the establishment's feet to the fire for the uh, conduct of, of the customers offsite.
And you're on page bottom.
This is page nine.
Nine, section eleven.
Section eleven. Unauthorized conduct relating to cannabis and yes, I can see where each of these should apply to the, perhaps to the owners and operators of the establishments, each of the types of establishments. But this almost extends that, uh, talks about unauthorized use out in a public place or open to the public or-
Should this possibly be under signage?
In any correctional, in any correctional facility.
That this information be signage that the licensee is, should have available.
Are you talking about signage or are you talking about section eleven?
I'm, I'm talking about section eleven.
I'm saying that it probably should, if it's under here, it should be under twelve as.
A advertising.
Well, signage within the facility, just reminding people what they're.
How do you hold the cus, how do you hold the, the owner responsible for customers' actions?
That's what I'm asking right now.
Right, I know, I know.
That's why I said signage, I mean, you definitely have signage in bars, but.
Right, but I didn't, I don't even know if we need to.
I'm, you know, I'm just wondering, is that appropriate in a, in a licensing?
Yeah, I, Dick, I, it sounds like what you were suggesting, and I could be wrong, um, is that, uh, this. The way it apps, the way it actually reads suggests that, uh, these might be licensing issues. But of course you can't control the behavior of people who might come into your establishment and, you know, uh, um. Engage in any of this conduct, so either it probably needs to come out or. It needs to be much more specific and say that, you know, no person employed by the licensee or, you know. Volunteering or. On the board or, you know, nobody associated with the licensee can engage in any of this conduct.
I don't, I think we can just take it out.
Yeah, I don't think that would fit very well either.
I, I'm wondering if what we want to do is modify it to say nothing in this ordinance should be deemed to permit any of the following activities which are expressly prohibited by law. So then it would be whether it's occurring on the establishment. I mean, there's nothing about anything else in here that's gonna say, hey, you can. You know, openly smoke in public at the establishment. Hey, you can, I mean, just a reminder to the consumer or anyone else that. That nothing about this is gonna trump state law and nothing about this is gonna, you know, I, I can't contemplate a situation. But until it happens and you're like, well. Okay, is this a loophole for something? And somebody's gonna argue that they were allowed to do this because they purchased it here and they hadn't left the facade. Yeah, I don't know.
This is, this is sort of, you know, this is sort of like prohibiting, uh, putting in the license. Document for a liquor joint that, uh, uh, your customer can't go out and pop a tab and drink on the way home. Drink your product on the way home. Is the way I see it and I, I don't see how that's the responsibility. I, I, I can see drammals like, you know. But, uh, where if you're impaired and you cause harm to someone else because of the impairment. Uh, I, you know, I think that we shouldn't prevent anything like that. I don't know that it's. Proper to put it in the licensing document like this.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Dick.
So the only thing I'm gonna say to that is I do think that there is going to be a challenge for us faced in enforcing the laws. Retains the cannabis because the public believes that this drug is different than other drugs. Because it's no big deal.
And this is medical marijuana.
And I, and that's exactly it. And people, I mean, I favor a reminder to the public. That you can get a DUI for driving under prescription meds. You cannot put the public at risk and many times the prescription bottles that people get. Talks about do not drive or operate heavy machinery under the influence of this. I don't know that that's gonna happen here. And I just don't want people saying, well, I just got this and have a prescription for it. I just want a reminder, I mean, I. Nothing about licensing this, nothing about authorizes illegal use. Um, and, and I just, but if you guys want to take it out, I mean, I understand and that's what we fall back to is this is about a licensing statute. If it, if other places have it, and this is in some pattern language from somewhere else. Then I would favor just reminding people, nothing in this ordinance should be deemed to authorize the following activities which are.
And I think that's where Phyllis was going is move it to signage, move, move these, these, uh. Uh, reminders, don't do this thing and make a sign that says, don't do these things.
Cause I, I, I also believe probably that at some point in time, we're gonna feel a swing. From those who are going about this the lawful way to crack down on folks selling marijuana illegally.
Yeah.
Why should they have to pay the permitting fees? Why should they have to jump through these hoops? Why should they have to go about this the right way? And Joe down the street.
Right.
Gets all the revenue without.
Right.
Of course, my other concern with having that section eleven in there. Is, because it's licensing. And we come for renewal time. And just like, just like liquor license, we ask Andy if there's any problem and he can go, yeah, I'm picking these people up. A mile from this place where they just bought their medical marijuana. They already lit up, they're under the influence. Under your license, it's their response, it's their fault. They, you shouldn't renew their license. That's a problem, I think. You, you can't, it's no different than Hy-Vee selling you beer. They don't let you drink it in the store, but once you get in your car. They're not at, they're, it's not their responsibility anymore. That's my only concern is.
Well, until people sue and then that's between the establishment.
That's the grandma connection, yes.
Yep, the bartender can be.
Absolutely, Phyllis.
But he's serving them. On site and he already knows they're impaired. If somebody walks in with the prescription and they're not impaired.
How do they know?
Well, you're never going to know. But you can, I mean, alcohol's easy when they're, they gotta pick themselves up off the floor.
No consumption.
Well, I'm gonna argue there are marijuana users where it's easy to.
If they come in with four bags of Doritos. Probably already done. Did you have a comment?
So you're trying to hold the business accountable for the person's actions, whereas like you said, beer you walked in, you buy, you crash your car two blocks down the street. The, the liquor store is not being sued. You're going to prison for life for the actions that you caused by the choices you made after you walked out of that liquor store. If you go buy marijuana legally and you walk out and tend to smoke in the parking lot, the cop comes by, you're getting arrested, you're getting a ticket. That's, has nothing to do with the facility that sold it to you because they didn't, they didn't give you a sign or anything that says, go out in my parking lot. Once, uh, right now, like you said, you're talking about medical, once recreational comes around. You're going to see facilities that hold it up just like a bar where you're allowed to go in and say, do that, then you would have to have a permitted driver. But right now, we're talking about medicals where you're gonna go in, go home and consume at your own house, not. Two blocks down the street, but if you do choose to do it two blocks down the street, that was your choice to not a cannabis dispensary that sold it to you. But you wanna hold the actions of the person that sold it. That's like I say, a kid got a person locked in twenty-two months alcohol. Five blocks, two blocks, six blocks, a mile, doesn't matter where they crashed. It was their choice to consume alcohol and get happy. That had nothing to do with the place that sold, if not every liquor store be shut down because I guarantee every liquor store that sold alcohol has had somebody crashed. Couple blocks away, but that wasn't the liquor store that made that decision. That was the consumer that made the decision.
Well, anyway, uh, I think it'd be good to check, see what the provenance of, do you know where you lifted this from?
Ninety percent sure I pulled it off the Sioux Falls one.
Yeah.
Uh, but I can definitely backcheck that.
Only check, check back and see what the reasoning is there. May, maybe there's good reasoning, but it just doesn't look. It doesn't look like it, uh, is quite cooked yet to me. Not quite done.
Pun intended.
Yes. Yes.
Do not drive or under paring as well. So the signage is on the product when you buy it, just like a package here that says can cause cancer. They're letting you know what options are available. You as the person are taking that chance of what you decide, your outcome is what you did not. We're not suing the cigarette company, they probably do cause cancer. You saw that choice. Alcohol says do not drive under the impairment. Well, every marijuana package that you're gonna get will have those. Prop sixty-five in California, that's what we call it, right? It will tell you, do not do these on there. So when it comes to, if you crash two blocks down the road, you can't say, oh, the dispensary told me this, okay, no, the package says do not drive, do not. So it's. It's a step that can be eliminated that has nothing to do with the process that's sold. As long as it was tested, it proved to be valuable to be sold. No chemicals, nothing like that. They've done everything on their part. Now it's, once down there, nor still are on their hands, that's the consumer and what they just do.
Thank you. So Drew, you've got what you need to do and you're just gonna set up another first reading?
Yeah, it's probably gonna be. Second meeting in September.
What's your request? You're working for free this year, right?
Yeah, outside working for free. Did ten percent increase just for costs? The only other big increase was I had a double the publishing budget because we're doing it in the. Two papers and I should have done that last year. Um, other than that. I need more equipment or that, so.
That's good.
Any questions for Drew? That was too simple.
Yeah. Yeah, the one, the one that, I guess this is a reverse question. You, you're asking for the same in, uh. Joint jurisdiction inspections, seven hundred and fifty bucks, but you had a big year already. Uh, but I assume that, that's a spike that you won't have going forward.
That and that. We had a big spike last year, but that money gets paid into. They paid the county for it and then we reimbursed the city for it.
I see.
That number's kind of a floating number as best as I.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They need somewhere to put that money. Yeah, so that is my, yeah.
Anything else, Rooster? Thank you. Rod, you ready?
We didn't get your paperwork correct, Rod.
Right, I'm sorry about that. I have it. With me, I thought I turned everything in, but it was still in my folder this morning.
Hey Drew. So gas quote for ten percent ethanol. We've got Jerry's service for three dollars twenty-two cents or Brenning's service for three dollars and forty cents. Rod recommends Jerry's at three twenty-two.
Yeah, moved to approve, uh, Jerry's.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that roll call?
Smackler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Uh, driveway application for Michael Lundquist on University Road.
Yeah, it's right south of Hope City. East side of the road, they're extending a driveway that's already there right on the section line. So they're just gonna add on to the north and both fields will have the same access instead of adding one up the road.
So they're going to the fence line with Christiansen's?
Yeah, you remember they put the plastic pipe in there.
That was my question.
He took it back out.
Okay.
That's why they're looking for a driveway now, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we, there was two of them, I believe, along university that they put in and without permits plus it was. Excuse me, was plastic and they've both been removed. I think in the future. Uh, we're using this heavy gauge plastic pipe. And I wouldn't be opposed to having that in. Driveways as long, you know, we're putting it under the road. So at some time we might want to look at changing our. I don't know if we have a actual ordinance or the rules for.
We do.
We do for driveways, so maybe we could. Update it with that plastic pipe. It's a lot easier to handle, plus it's. You know, if you burn the road ditch, it ain't gonna melt like this, um, halfway tile they have, you know. So that's where I have the problem with. They put that tile in and then they don't get the ends completely down because they're doing their slope and then the. If you get a bunch of water.
Yeah.
The end of the pipe comes up and then you don't get any flow.
Yeah.
So.
Do they make, do they make metal for, they make flares for those then too?
Yes, you, you just put the metal.
Put a metal.
Yes, you can put a metal flare on it. We, we haven't required that yet. Um, any state project we did like three oh two up there from nineteen east that they all have the. Flared in safety ends they call. So you don't actually, you know, hit the culvert supposedly gonna drive over it. But those are also six to one slope. On the approaches where we try to get, if we can get three to. Four, we're doing pretty good. I always tell them if they can mow it with their rider, they're, they're close enough, you know. Once they, is anything after two, pretty steep. And we try to get that, you know, we got so many old driveways out there just straight up and down. You know, but trying to improve as we go. Oh, we have not required the safety ends in there. Uh, we had a couple people put them on.
Yeah, so what does this, this, uh, this one have for culvert?
It has concrete and they're gonna take that out and put a metal pipe in. Yeah, I think it has a fifteen inch pipe in there and doesn't it say eighteen?
Eighteen, so they're gonna attach to Christiansen's driveway too?
Yeah, they're gonna take the pipe out and put a whole, the whole thing is gonna be metal. We don't hook them up to concrete. They don't work so good.
But they're gotta get a, I mean, it's gonna be more than the forty foot culvert then, right? It's gonna be, it's gonna be this forty foot plus whatever Christiansen's had.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that should be, because I think, I imagine Christiansen. Is gonna do the other half. I'm not, and I have a question down the bottom of that. Any questions? Ask Matt.
Matt Adams, yep.
Is he?
Yeah, well, he lives over by Pierceford.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if it was gonna be somebody in California or.
No.
Or what, but I haven't talked to him yet. I told him after the meeting I'd give, I told that Michael, I'd give him a call, see where we're at, so.
So you've got the materials, the application and stuff.
Yep, it's an eighteen inch.
Length it's gonna be at or?
Oh, I, I would say probably gonna be eighty feet.
Yeah, at least. Yeah, but Christiansen's are already approved, so they don't have to.
And this is just added on to it, but take out the other pipe and go.
Right.
You know, it's kind of a, they already have their driveway there. Christiansen's did. I actually thought Mark farmed that.
Nope, not that for.
He just, how come they put that plastic pipe in there, I wonder? He just, how come they put that plastic pipe in there? I wonder.
Well, he farms to the south of this one.
Yeah, but didn't, wasn't the plastic pipe on the north side? It was on the south side. But there's just concrete there now, so. It'll all be metal pipe. You know, I guess maybe should have something from Christiansen's attached to that for the next one or I just, you know.
Well, they don't have to get an application, right?
I wouldn't, I don't know if they're gonna take the concrete pipe out. I just figured this is gonna be better. We're gonna have one driveway and that whole mile instead of separating them, so I never asked Christiansen for anything.
They've already got the, they've already done their application and permit prior to this one. They've already been approved. They're just replacing.
Now, now this, is there, is there much flow through that culvert as it is?
No.
Not right now.
So we don't have to worry about doubling the length, having more friction or?
No, not on that side of the road, the other side of the road.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Ends up on that side of the road to the south, but.
Yes. So, or do we have enough that we can approve this driveway application now, so?
Yeah, yeah, it's got everything it needs.
Yeah, I'd recommend you.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that on roll call?
Smackler?
Yes.
Eamon?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Smackler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Uh recycling trailer for Wakanda.
Yeah. Phil, since I spoke about it, I forgot about it that day. We talked about the landfill. So since about two thousand and sixteen, every month I've been pulling this recycling trailer to the recycling center, unloading it, then taking it back to Wakanda. But at the beginning, that was kind of, I looked in the minutes and I never found anything that said that is gonna be my job forever, but I never found anything that it wasn't. And I know how that works. You do it once, it's yours.
Well, the agreement was that we would pull it down here.
Right.
Now, whether it's you personally or somebody else in your department.
Well, it was because I live in Wakanda. You know, so I just, I don't know, but and the biggest problem at that time was the city guy. He absolutely didn't want nothing to do with the trailer. He wouldn't pull it. And so I don't know, they ended up getting funding for the whole thing. I think you guys were gonna help them with that and then it come down to, I'd, I'd pull it in, but they got, they went through two city, they're under second city guy now and I don't know, I think.
Well, assign it to Tim then.
I, I think that city pickup of theirs, I see it driving down the road and I'm pretty sure it could handle that trailer, but I just, before I go to the city meeting and tell them I'm done, I want to know what you guys think. If you want me to pull it till I retire, that's fine.
Which is gonna be a problem according to you.
Well. You know, it, it wouldn't be such a bad deal if the people up there could read. But when you take that to the recycling center and you unload garbage and it says under no plastic bags or cardboard of any kind. And when you unload the plastic bottles, there's plastic bags, so then you gotta sort all that out. I mean, you can't hardly get it to come out of the trailer without taking that out. And, you know, they, there's cardboard in there, there's everything that you understand, dirty diapers, all that good stuff. I mean, people don't care. They just, oh, there's a spot. We did get the farmers, we're having trouble with some farmers around there dumping all their pesticide jugs in there, which they, they will take at the recycling center, but you gotta bring them in yourself and.
Gotta be triple rinsed.
Right, they gotta be all rinsed and so, I don't know, I just, I know it's only once a month, but I think they need to get weaned off me and have the city maybe, city guy could come with me the next time maybe and see what they gotta do. You know, they, rocket science, but.
You've been doing this for six years.
Since two thousand and sixteen or seventeen, right?
Is that it? Seems like longer than that.
It seems like twenty years and I forget it. Irene, Irene City guy, he brings it in every two months. I will say one thing about Wakanda, the thing is, it never make two months.
It's full anyway.
Yeah, they, they use it. The thing was designed wrong. You know, it should have had all the heavy stuff in the front and the plastic in the back like Irene's. It's not fun to pull when it's got newspaper and magazines in the back, all the weights on the back end.
Tail tries to wag the dog.
Oh, yeah, about forty-five on the way to town.
Can't they change the stickers?
Yeah, but there is no room, I mean, for the plastic bottles, it goes all the way across. Two and the other ones are just separate bins. They're a lot smaller. And we looked at trying to cut the sections out in the back and move the sections to the front and while that was pretty much just man-made little trailer, so. So just gotta take it easy on the way to town.
So to conform with the other city and in the county and, and after six years, it's their turn. Is what I would say when you go to the city.
Well, then they'll keep track. They'll, they'll watch who's throwing diapers in too.
And if, yes, once it's your responsibility, you're a lot, you pay more attention as to what's going in and.
We might not sell it, sell the idea if we talk about diet, dirty diapers right away. It might be better to.
Well, he's been, he's been around.
Yeah.
The city guy pulled up the other day and he goes, how's it looking there? And I showed him. You know, like the water comes in shrink wrap, plastic bags.
Yeah.
Uh, there must have been a hundred of them in there.
Yeah.
And then that, that takes up room more than you think, or they throw it in a garbage bag. They put them all in a garbage bag and throw it up there, then that gets in front of the door. Usually when you open it up, it runs all over it, then you got, plus that takes up more room than just the bottles, but.
Yeah, I think based on uniformity in the county for cities recycling and it's their turn, I would just bring those two things up. Say, hey, it's your turn now.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't wanna say anything till I talk to you because I know it was a discussion when we, when we did this. I think it was like two thousand and sixteen is when they were gonna buy it.
What, what's your thoughts, Phyllis?
My own thought is also recommending that they ask their students, you know, junior high and high school to do some education with their parents.
They put it in the paper quite a few times. We got signs. It's just like stop signs, speed signs. But I mean, you know, the city has tried, it's just the people that don't comply. And I've, I've got names off of stuff that garbage has been thrown in like a cat food bag and I got like a list of names I never ate my place to save. But I know a few of, were doing it. I mean, there's a section for new like old mail, junk mail and newspaper or office paper go in one bin. And then there's a cat food sack, half full of that, and then there's garbage underneath, you know. It's crazy. And the city of Vermillion said they have the same problem. So I mean, it's not.
Yes, they.
Just Wakanda, but I'm just saying. One, one hat less I have to wear.
Yeah.
If you, if you guys, if you don't want me to, that's fine. I will keep doing it. Well, I've been gonna bring it up for years. And then when the landfill road come up, you know, and I talked to you about it and I, all of a sudden I thought, hey, this is my chance. So I think they ought to be able to pull it once a month, that old shabby pickup. They're afraid they're gonna have to buy a new pickup to pull it. I pulled it home with our old shabby pickup because mine was in the shop, so.
Yeah, what's, there's a half ton or?
No, I think it's a three-quarter ton, got a utility box on the backs, single cab, you know, but they take the aluminum cans, they take them to Yankton. I said, why don't you bring them to Vermillion? I guess Yankton pays more.
Yes.
But it's all.
Which is part of the reason.
But I don't think I'd get on the town meeting till it's either last Monday or first Monday of the month. I don't remember.
Couldn't tell you.
But I'll get on there and if you approve that, I'm, I would appreciate it. I don't see why one of my guys, I guess paid twenty bucks an hour, has to drive up there from Vermillion to pick it up and bring it down. I mean, I'm salaried, so whether I'm doing anything or not, that's kind of why it was hooked. Dennis has pulled it in a couple times when I've been on vacation. So then he has to take his week pickup home with him the night before. And then he brings it down, takes it back, you know, he's the only one, the other one that pulled it and he refused. I'd ask him if he wanted to take over. He refused.
Don't bring him up or say no, just say we're out.
All right, thank you.
Uh, the no-through trucks on four fifty-two, which is the west county line.
Yeah, so we had this discussion last week. Uh, since then, I've had several conversations with the DOT. They moved their, what's called the billboard sign back over to nineteen, south of Centerville. And we're not seeing many trucks up there. Nothing like it was the first two weeks. Uh, I talked to Mike this morning and we kind of decided unless you guys saw it different, that we just leave it alone the way it is. Because then we're kind of putting the pressure on some of the farmers on the south end hauling hay up that way. And, you know, I don't want to get in the way of that and the, the truck traffic. I sat up there for an hour the other day doing some paperwork and making some phone calls and I saw one local truck go by and unlike the last time we were up there, they were lined up behind each other. I think they figured out that once they go south, they gotta do a lot of zigzagging around to get back over to eighty-one. It's just easier to go to fifty. You know, like if they're going south, you should just go to nineteen. I haven't looked over there, set on nineteen to see the truck traffic, but I actually talked to a couple guys heading for Sturgis the other day on their motorcycle south Irene and they turned and the guy's, how far south do we gotta go? I go just up here to the corner, turn around and just go straight north. He said, how come they don't have any signs showing that? I go, well, they did back, you know, four miles back there. Yeah, we saw something go by, I mean, on people, that's why I said, you put the sign right in the middle of there, slow down, drive around it, but they won't read it. And we have guys standing out there with a stop sign in the middle of the road that they blow right by, so. But I, I think maybe I overreacted. I think we could leave it the way it is unless something later comes up. I think.
Have one of these rain storms actually go through up there then?
No, everything's went to the north or over there east in eighteen about the water treatment plant. They've been getting all the rain. We must got a half an inch the other day, didn't you?
Yeah, I did.
I got one tenth.
Up until then, I was regulated knowing people who got rain.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Myron Grove discussion.
Um, before we go to that, do you wanna discuss what we talked about this morning on the park road? Okay. Yeah, so last Wednesday, I finally got in contact with everybody from Myron Grove project that was out on site or you met with in the library. Because I've been throwing everything at them. Hey, what about the more borings and all this? And so they finally decided they better have a meeting with. So Larry and I met with them and it was a good meeting and they they think that the borings are a good idea, so that's going, we're not gonna do them. I had it lined up to do it already, but we're not gonna do them. They're gonna put it in with the project funding and probably do six or eight boring quarter samples, I should say, to prove that, that their plan is to go down and go six inches deep, take all that out and then put six inches back, but I'm almost positively don't know what they're gonna get when they get to six inches. I'm afraid it's gonna be the blue clay, just like Saginaw was, and that's what I referenced to them, that we did this almost identical length. And there ain't much difference between the Burbank bottom and the Meckling bottom. So, but until that is going in, they have not done any design plan. They won't till after the quarter samples are done and they'll start to design. But they're still talking, you know, midsummer, late fall next year for construction, so it's still on the table. But the biggest thing out of that, and they also told them that we had to put that geofabric underneath the road and they said that could be, depending on the quarter samples, that could be added to the design. But the big thing I got out of this, and I may be wrong, which wouldn't surprise me, but I could have swore I heard that there was enough money. They got enough money to do this road that the township or the county was gonna have to pay that seventeen point eight percent. There was gonna be enough to cover that.
Oh, yeah, because the, somebody else is kicking that in.
But that is not the case according to these guys. There is.
They told me at the, because that was the big thing when we were at the library. It's not gonna cost the township or the county a dollar.
Because they said that the guy from H, FHWA Nathan, he said somebody will need to cover the twenty percent or, you know, the seventeen nine. So if it's a million and a half dollar project, which depending on what they find, a three hundred thousand bucks somebody's gonna have come up with.
Which national park, right? Which one is? What, who was the entity? Those are national parks? Park Service, they're picking up the, the seventeen percent and they were at that meeting.
Okay.
At the library.
I wonder how come that.
Well, because Nate's covering his, his portion or his side.
Yeah, Nate, Nate's the money guy.
Knows somebody else is paying.
But he, he told me that that surprised me when he said that. I said, well, I heard it was covered. No. He said either the township or the county's gonna have to come up with. He said either the township or the county's gonna have to come up with that money. So that was the biggest thing, I kind of surprised me out of that meeting. But they seem relatively. Open to the. Fact that there is not gonna come in and. One day lay some gravel and spray some oil on pavement there. They're um. Thinking more like we need to look at, because I told them six to twelve for base. You know, depending on what it says underneath. And it might end up being twelve, which that's gonna add to the cost. And then they were talking three inches, I saw in the plan, I got the. Kind of a free, free uh, you know. Preliminary plans in here and it said three and a half. Which would be better. But then also, uh, the only thing I forgot to ask him. After the, you know, after a meeting Larry and I were talking about, you know, what we're gonna have to do and. He, I think the guy said that there wasn't gonna be any shouldering. Because they're gonna go down and six inches and go back six inches, but there's gonna be three inches. On top without a, any kind of a taper on the shoulder. You, and I don't care that three inches catches people. So there gotta be something on there, which when they come with the design plan. You know, that, they're in the process of doing that. I don't remember the other two guys, like one of them is a Dale. From the engineering firm and the other guy, I think they're all in Colorado. We had a meeting on the computer. But, so the quarter samples are taken care of, they're, they are gonna core it. First, so that's the first step in my mind. And then I don't know the next time they get a hold of me for a meeting, I would like to have. You guys or a couple of you included in that, so. You know, if, if possible.
How deep do they plan on coring?
Well, six feet is what I suggested. Uh, that's what we, I think we went six or seven and. On Saginaw, I don't remember, the only thing, the only test we didn't do on Saginaw was leave a hole open. And as a forty-eight hour, see how much water comes in it. Yeah, we, we did not do that down there. I mean, we all kind of figured there was gonna be water in it.
Assume it's gonna be.
Right, because it wasn't, you know, it was still. Well, you know how wet it was, were you on the board when we did that? You didn't see the old blue gumbo hoof till that was. And that's, you know, they, they have no clue what I'm talking about. And I, you know, there's a word for it in the engineering language, I'm sure, blue clay is the only thing. I know how to.
It's fat clay.
I, yes, you know, you know, I was gonna look back through the borings and, but I don't know which. Which one was the blue clay and which one, you know, that's, my son could tell me, but. He went to school for engineering. So that, you know, after that meeting, I feel a little better. They are gonna do some base stabilization and if that calls for. That fabric, then they'll put it down, but I told them that the base has to be. South Dakota DOT specs and they agree with that. Because that's the way we bend our gravel and, you know, I got that little black book for South Dakota standards. For roadways and, you know, all that's explained in there and I told them, you know. I send them a copy if they need to look through it and they said, you know, they get to it online. Because every state has something different, seems like. But the only thing I was worried about was traffic. They, they don't think there's much truck traffic on there, but there's one field where seasonal. And I don't know if there's any equipment going back down to that big machine sheds down there. But I mean, they gotta get there with their equipment. You know, they just, they're just talking, oh, we're just talking three quarter ton pickup in a camper, no, we're not.
And they know, they saw the trucks that day.
Yeah, they had, actually had a picture of a hate truck or something come out.
They said they're only gonna close one lane, they're gonna have to work.
Yeah, when they do the road, yeah, but there's a pretty easy way to get around it too. They go to the east and come up by, I think Olson's comes out over there. So there actually is a little detour, they complain about it probably. So, but they're still talking at the end of. Late summer, early fall next year, so. I guess it's gonna happen, but what gets me is they're not doing anything. After you get to the concrete wall where it says, you know, they got the monster blocks stacked up, that's the end of the project. They're not doing, I can't believe they're not doing anything. You know, access to me is the road getting there into the water. But they're not doing anything with the parking lot or the boat.
Because they're different, they're different federal agencies or state agencies.
Yeah, just. But they are coming out to both the. Roads on the curve. For some reason, I don't know, they had it cut off right there. So, just an update on what was going on there. And I'm on the list now, so. They'll email me and I'll tell them to put. Couple of you guys, couple of your commissioners, whoever wants to hear what they got to say. So.
Main thing is to make sure that, that we don't end up picking up that extra three hundred thousand.
Yeah, that, that's the big. That's what had me going. Because I was thinking the guy that was in charge of the money. Out from Colorado, um. Yeah, um, trying to think of uh, Bull and Brain did. Meckling Township.
Kelvin.
Yeah, Calvin Hansen and I talked to that guy, I could have swore he said that. You guys are lucky, we got this approved, plus we got it a hundred percent proved, nobody's gonna have to pick up. Any, any part of it, but. Of course, stuff's been going up crazy since that had to be like. Three, four years ago this first started, wasn't it, eighteen?
Something like that.
Nineteen.
Well, nobody's signed on to it yet, so.
Right, right. And is so that the township. I was at work, so if we, okay, we got everything figured out, the township signs it. And it's there, there's till it's done and then we're gonna take it over. So the signage and everything is. Already in place, you know, we helped to put, they changed the speed limit. Uh, to thirty-five or thirty, I don't remember. And we went out and helped put up the signs and stuff, so I mean.
Once it's paved, that'll probably go to fifty, fifty-five, I suppose.
Hey, boy.
No, they want left there. Which I'm fine with.
Yeah. I mean, the park road is forty-five.
Yeah, the park, park service can go out and do the ticketing too. They've got, they've got new law enforcement guys, they've just added.
Oh, yeah? The park service did?
Yeah, mainly for on the river, there was a. Newspaper article about that in the P and D. Two weeks ago.
Well, they're down at the Clay County Park quite often, or game warden somebody's. Because I drove down to see how the parking lot was and. He had about six guys lined up there, he was checking coolers.
Yeah, yeah, they, they have, they're, they're taking on law enforcement responsibility on the river, I guess. Not to displace everybody else, I don't think, but.
Do we, do we still have a signed um. Game warden for Clay County?
That I couldn't tell you.
I didn't know, but I know one time we. I thought he was deployed and then we had somebody covering like four counties. I didn't know if we had some, I know they were doing. He was doing two usually union in Clay, I thought, I didn't know. I haven't talked to, I haven't seen a game warden here, nothing for a while, so.
Me neither. Okay.
I have one other update. Land Dean's Fox Culver. It passed.
No, really? Shocker.
Well, this is an independent. Um, they didn't have the state, they didn't have his guys tested, they had an independent. And I, I don't think their Odyssey falls, but I got a call the other day and they passed it. It's like forty-five hundred, so it's within range and also I asked them before that. And they can take the floor out. So they wouldn't have had to take the whole thing out, they can take the floor out and I. Don't understand the contracting, but the, the middle and the edges are set on their own foundation. Floor is kind, in in between, but they, I went up there yesterday morning and they're backfilling. The south side already DOT was up there, they got the riprap in place, so.
It should be done this week, though.
Yeah, I hope they make it till. Friday, they're done, then we can open it Monday, because we got paving to do, but anyway. The DOT. Did not call me, the, the actual guy that did the testing is the one that called and let me know. And if you want, I, I'm gonna ask for a report on that, I wanna see. See just. Always think, well, of course it's gonna pass.
I guess one thing too is what, if the state guys say it's okay without load limit. Is there any load limit projected?
No. That's, that's basically why.
That might be a good thing to ask them.
Yeah.
Is this uh, can you guarantee that this is gonna be fine without any load limit?
Yeah, they told me that on the, one on Norwegian Avenue last year, had trouble with the deck on that. And I don't know who's doing the testing, but they. Had somebody from over in Iowa come over and they did their quarter samples and. It tested fine, it was low, lower than it was, but still with inspection, no future. Weight limit restrictions on it.
Probably con- consolidated CTS out of Subcity, I'll bet.
Yeah, I, I don't remember, I, I saw the guy up there. Taking the samples, so.
There's one in Storm Lake too, but they're the only ones close by.
But we, we have put up speed limit signs up there. I mean, uh, see, I think there's already speed limit. Well, there's fifty-five at uh, forty-six, but no, there's no speed limit. That was a complaint of the landowner in the first place. That was even with that wooden bridge, they come flying through there and now it's gonna be a gravel road all the way, but. Of course, you still, somebody's gotta be up there to see it and then we'll have to pass a resolution. For that, so we can, or did we decide that any, you know, we went through this speed limit thing here a couple of years ago. Do, if we add new speed limit, do we still have to do a resolution or does it go in that whole package? You remember? You know, we, we're, we kind of got all the speed, different speed zones in the county. I think it was more so Andy could enforce the. Speed limits, because we got speed limits for county structures on township roads. And I don't think at that time they were included, so, but I don't know if we have to do another resolution. For this is only gonna be eight hundred feet. You know, the speed limit is, starts right north side of the grove of trees and after they go across the structure. So I guess when we get to that point, uh, next meeting we'll probably. We'll put them up just so they know they're there, but we'll have to get a resolution passed maybe. And I don't remember if the resolution has to be advertised. Is that just an ordinance?
That's something for Kerry to answer.
That's all I have, thank God, you got anything for me?
No, I don't think so.
It sounds like the microservicing probably gonna move in this weekend. Get started on that, Larry's at the. Striping pre-con meeting in Sioux Falls this morning, so they'll be doing some retracing on. Have you guys seen any striping out there that just looks terrible in your travels?
In our county?
Yeah, no. We got a couple that are getting pretty.
Getting worn out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the deal is, we used to stripe it and the peat seemed to last a lot longer. But we're putting bigger plows, more salt, I suppose, don't help. But we can't afford to have those little grues. That's a good idea when they groove it and then they paint it in there, then that, all the traffic never touches it, that's, but. That's kind of spendy. I'll let you know how it goes at the city meeting. You're gonna, you're gonna come up and back me up?
Sit there and go, I don't know what he's talking about.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I can handle that guy.
Who is that guy?
Yeah, I've never. I think I've only been to one meeting and that was because they asked me to come to see if we. Dig something out, I don't remember what it was, but.
Okay, nobody has anything else for Rod? Thanks, Rod.
Thank you.
If, if nobody has anything else, we need to go into executive session for contractual. Rod to the principal's office. So if we wanna, you'll get, okay, if you wanna make, make a motion to go into.
Make a motion to go into executive session for contractual matters.
I have a motion and a second, roll call. Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Heeman?
Yes.
Packard?
Yes.
We're in executive session, so if you want to pause the recording and get rid of everybody else. Everybody but Betty. We're not in the, out of executive session yet. Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Mochler?
Yes.
Heeman?
Yeah, she said yes. She was muted. Um, we're out of, we're in regular session. I don't know, it depends. Phyllis, you want to do what, budget review?
Oh, yeah, on the thing and had a budget discussion.
Yeah, that, she's just putting that on there just in case we wanna.
That's what I was asking.
In case we had any questions. And no offense to Nicole, but I think we should probably wait if we had any questions, still carries back. So if nobody has anything else, we can, they can adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Um, Mochler?
Yes.
Heeman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Packard?
Yes.
We're adjourned, thank you.